Councilmember Ron Washington has our prayer and pleds this evening. Mr. Washington.
Yes, sir. Let's have a moment of silence, please.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, March 11, 2010. And I remind our viewers that March 16, next Tuesday night at Patterson Center on Mercury Boulevard, we'll try to get together and look at the plans for the South Manny Avenue area from College Street across Main Street, moving up South Manny toward Broad Street. That is from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Patterson Community Center on Mercury Boulevard next to our Bradley School and behind or beside Holloway High School. So if you would attend that, we would appreciate it and get some information about what we're planning. Mr. Washington.
And I want to thank Chris, Chris Griffith, for being on the radio show on Sunday night. He did a wonderful job talking about the project and the plan. It's an infrastructure upgrade, and he did a wonderful job. So I want to thank him for doing that.
All right. Noted. Our consent agenda, item 1A, has been moved to other business. And so the only thing on the consent agenda is this recommendation of the Community Development Grant Coordinator for use of funds through the Affordable Housing Assistance Program. If you've had an opportunity to check then that consent agenda item, are there any questions? I believe Mr. Callow is here.
Mr. Callow, if you could just explain what it is that's being done with this money and how it comes about.
Yes, sir. I believe there are three items, four items. The down payment assistance program, we use community development block grant money. The program is designed to give deferred loans of up to $10,000 to help income eligible first-time homebuyers purchase houses in Murfreesboro. And then we've also got a down payment program that's part of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and that is a grant of $14,999, which helps with down payment and closing costs for people who do not have to be first-time homebuyers, who are willing to buy vacant foreclosed houses as their primary residence.
This is for individual families to make these purchases.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. You have to be income eligible to be part of the programs.
Okay.
Can I answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question? If not, is there a motion then that we approve our consent agenda?
So moved. Seven.
All right, you have a motion. Second, please call the Romans. Wright.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Before we get into our regular agenda, I want to recognize two Boy Scouts that are with us, Scout Lee Poplin and Nathan Poplin are both with Troop 441 out of the beautiful downtown growing and gracious Christiana. And let's see, is Lee the troop leader? Thank you. I identified you as a scout. You look so young. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it. But Nathan is working on a citizenship badge, I presume, and we're happy to have you here and wish you well and hope you're very successful in your scouting career. We also have Councilmember Ron Washington's daughter Carmel with us today, and she slipped away from the seat.
She's back in the production room.
Oh, she's in the production. She left. I couldn't figure out whether that was a reward or punishment for Carmel to be here tonight, but I'm very pleased that she's here, and I hope she'll understand that we're proud that she's with us tonight. So forgive me for overlooking you, and good luck to you in your scouting. All right. We'll consider now for passage on second reading an ordinance amending Appendix A zoning, Section 7, 18, and 27 pertaining to site plan review enhancements.
May I have a passage on second reading?
Second. All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the Planning Commission to schedule public hearings to consider rezoning an area along Bradville Pike, amend to Garrison Cove, Section 5 PUD, and rezone an area east of Rutherford Boulevard. Ms. Adelot.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg, members of council. These items need to be scheduled for public hearings. They did not enjoy a whole lot of time. Well, they did enjoy an adequate amount of time, but there was not a lot of public participation on these items, so it should not take a long time with the council.
All right. Ms. McGannon.
Mayor, I would suggest April 8.
All right. I have a conflict that night. Would there be another day?
The 22nd.
Councilmembers, is the 22nd agreeable?
Mayor, I'll make the motion, but I did want to make a couple of comments first. There were some individuals who called about one of these items today, and what I wanted to make sure that we let the public know is this is scheduling for public hearing. We're not voting to approve or not approve any of these tonight. It is to allow the public another opportunity to speak about those. And the second thing, Mr. Adelot, one of those PUDs, I think there were some changes that we had suggested at the Planning Commission, and you will make sure, of course, that those changes are made before the presentation comes back to us at this body. Correct.
That is correct. The changes that were discussed and part of the motion will be included in the program book for that item.
With that, Mayor, I would move that we set a public hearing for April 22nd. Ms. McGannon?
Yes, sir.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second to set a public hearing on these three particular items on April 22nd. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the Water and Sewer Board as regarding Osburn Lane Sanitary Sewer Assessment District and consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to amend Chapter 33, Osburn Lane Sanitary Sewer Assessment District, Section 33-208. Mr. Kirchner.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a clerical error that we had in receiving funds for this Osburn Lane Sanitary Sewer District, and by making this change to the ordinance, it rectifies that in that there's a subdivision adjacent to the Compton Road assessment, which is in the Osburn Lane District that the Compton Road fees were in an error assigned to those, and so we've corrected that. And this makes that correction to where those that had paid prior to November 1st would pay the Compton Road fees, and then those after November 1st pay the fee that was established in the original ordinance.
So what was November 1st?
That's just a time certain, the breakpoint.
Well, what was before it? What was the fee?
People paid the wrong, the lesser fee. They were charged less than what the prescribed fee was, so this corrects that. Where we don't go back and get the money from them, we just go from now on and charge the correct amount to those forward.
How did we not charge that fee?
It was a clerical error. What we normally do is take a plat and send it over to our customer service, and on that we write down what the fees were, and they were just, the wrong fees were put on that plat, and we caught that after some time, and so this is a correction to that. I mean, we've corrected that. We double-checked now all those before they go back over to customer service.
Do we have new procedures in place, or that we don't do this again?
Yes, that's what we normally did, just send the plat over to customer service, and they would put the fees down. But now, engineering reviews it and checks it against the GIS and puts the prescribed fees to make sure they're double-checked, and then customer service checks it off.
Who was responsible to pay those?
It would have been the builder at the time that the house was built.
Each individual builder?
Yes.
It wasn't the developer, wasn't?
No. It would be the, usually it's the builder or the plumber that comes in and gets the fee to make the connection, and so they're gone, and it may even have changed hands some of the houses. There's 18 houses that this affects out of 30.
Now, the title is passed. It would be the homeowner's responsibility, and we at the Water Board felt that would not be fair to retroactively, after these families had moved into their homes, secured their financing and so forth, to come back to them with a charge that they didn't know that they owed.
Any other questions?
Ms. McGannon, do we need separate motions for these two items?
No. I mean, the ordinance is...
They're listed as an A and a B, but we can...
The ordinance implements A.
I understand. Then in that case, I would move for approval and adoption of the ordinance on first reading.
Is there a second? How much money is involved in this?
About $39,000.
And how much is that assessment district? What was the...
The Osburn Lane Assessment District was $2,500 for each single-family unit, and the Compton Road was 300, so there's a difference of $2,200 that those...
So they were charged the Compton Road...
They were charged the 300.
Okay. How big was that initial? What was the expense of that initial line? Do you know what...
About $295,000.
Total?
Total.
So we're asking for 15% not to get paid back?
When you look at this...
Are great payers going to have to pay that?
When you look at this, there was two facets to this, because this gets along Memorial Boulevard and gets a lot of commercial properties. So the commercial properties were assessed on a per-acre basis, and if you look at the zoning as it is now and the total funds that would be received if everything built out would be $455,000. So I think there's sufficient there through the commercial properties and the remaining residential that if everything would build out, as we would expect, that it would be paid back.
The funding will be there to cover it if everything builds out...
Yes.
...under the plan that you're proposing. And also, Mr. Kirchner, some of the families were talking about how long would they have been living in these houses that we're about to, otherwise if we don't pass this, tell them that all of a sudden they owe this.
It's been three or four years, I think.
Families have been living in homes for three or four years, thinking that they secured their financing, have been making their house payments, have been doing everything they thought that they were supposed to do but for our error, and we're going to go back and tell them they're responsible for it. I just don't think it's fair.
I agree. I don't think the issue is whether it's fair to go back to the homeowners and do that. I think it's just, you know, and I know Mr. Kirchner and the employees that we have at the Water and Sewer Department do a fantastic job, but nonetheless, it's a $39,000 mistake and 15% of what we spent to run that line on Osburn Lane, and I, you know, I can't. You know, I make mistakes in my business, and I eat them all the time, but unfortunately, I wouldn't make them this large, so...
But also eat my mistakes.
Yeah.
Second, Toby.
Thank you.
Well, you have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Mayor, the only point I'd make is if this doesn't pass, then we are actually asking the homeowners to eat our mistake.
Yeah.
And that's the bottom line.
We're not going to do that.
No, they can't do that.
No, no, no. And they didn't like the assessment in the first place. So, you know, no, no, let's move on.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments?
One question, Mayor. Mr. Kirchner, what checks and balances do we have in place to prevent this again?
Well, now we have engineering review the plat and put the prescribed fees on that plat and send it over to customer service, and then customer service checks against the fee structure, too. So we have double-check.
Okay.
Do we have any, do we have the opportunity to, at some point, I don't know, like our computer programs that we have in Water and Sewer? I don't think we're not, we're on a Windows-based program, or we're more on an older system. Do we have the opportunity to look at, and I'm not on the Water and Sewer Board, I know this is something y'all may already be discussing, where we can list those lots, and you bring them up in a computer and see how much the fee is, and it's automatically in the computer? Right now, we do it by, you go sit down, and they pull a plat out, and we have it checked off to whether...
We have that capability, but it's still, someone's got to put that in there, so, you know, if you don't put that in right in the computer, then that doesn't necessarily make it right. So it's, you know, it was a human error that we would need to do and have that. Certainly, doing something with the GIS would be helpful, but I don't know that it would have prevented this.
Only residences involved here were any commercial fees paid?
Yes, sir. There was one commercial fee paid, but it's not on a, it wasn't $2,500. It was $10,000 an acre, so they're totally separate and apart in fees.
So you're just forgiving the residential?
Just residential.
One other question, Mr. Kirchner. I'm curious to know, how did we find our oversight?
A lady had come in to pay the fee and went to engineering and was given the fee, and then it was different from what she had heard before, and so that's when the discrepancy was found, and she paid the correct fee.
Okay. So somebody on a new water task?
Yes.
Okay.
Came in to pay it and got a different answer than she had before when she inquired.
Yeah. Life is a series of adjustments.
And we apologize for the error. I mean, it's definitely our bad.
With a motion and a second, no further questions, please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you.
Was that for A and B both?
That's both. That's to consider on first reading this ordinance to amend. All right. At this time, we'll consider recommendations of the Urban Environmental Director with regards to bids for the tree work services at Evergreen Cemetery. Mr. Lyons, you're going to handle that, please.
Yes, yes, Mayor. Mayor Bragg, members of council, the Urban Environmental Department opened bids last week for the removal of dangerous trees at Evergreen Cemetery. The city did receive four bids, and Druid Tree Service submitted a bid in the amount of $60,000. They were the low bidder. There was a technical irregularity with their bid. They got the bid submitted to the city on time. It had the proper licensure information on the bid as required by state law. However, the bid envelope lacked the words "due" on March 5. Staff talked to the legal department. We believe this to be a minor irregularity. Our bid specifications allow us to waive minor bid irregularities, and therefore, it is our recommendation to ward the bid to Druid Tree Service in the amount of $60,000.
Ms. McGannon, you feel comfortable that...
Yeah, I believe it is within the city's power to waive this omission, yes.
Ms. McGannon?
I think the members of the council are aware that the second low bidder has indicated he believes the bid should be rejected. I think you're aware of that, but in case somebody was not, I wanted to be sure you knew that they had expressed concern.
So do their concerns have the capacity to stop this from moving forward?
I'm never going to speak for a judge, but I think it is unlikely that one would issue an injunction.
Okay.
Serving on the Environmental Committee, I know that this bid had a lot of technical definitions on how things had to be done. The limbs couldn't be dropped on the gravestones because of damage. It's a complicated bid, and I think we have the right to accept the lowest and the best bid. I think that's the legal terminology in most contracts, and I've seen bid situations where the lowest bid was not the best bid, and I've seen situations where the best bid, the lowest bid was, and then everyone has an option to question what we can do, but if you're comfortable with the language that we can't accept this bid, I think you should move forward.
One other question real quick. So the outside of the envelope is the only point the other bidder is making, not with the bid contents?
That is the only objection, of which I've been made aware, is that the envelope lacked the date that the bid would be opened. The bid was submitted timely and was opened timely, but the, some items on the outside of bid envelopes are non-wavable. When a state license for general contracting or specialty contracting is required, it is a violation of law to open the envelope if licensure is required and it's not listed on the envelope. The bid date is in a different category, in my opinion, and it is not a violation of law, but is in fact within the city's discretion. You know, the person who submitted a bid without a date on it would not be able, in my opinion, to successfully sue the city if the city had said, "You don't have a date on it. We're not going to open it."
Right.
But we chose to open it, and we, the recommendation to you from Ms. Holloway is to choose to exercise your discretion to waive that technical irregularity.
Other questions?
I think timing of the actual work is important here, too, Mayor. We will be coming up on our dry season, and this is the time of year to get this done, coming up into May and June that are the dry part of the year. So if we started over from scratch, it may delay this to where we're getting into a situation where it may take too long or delay this unnecessarily.
Mr. Young, I agree with everything you said, but the city, that would not be the city's only option. If the city chose not to waive the irregularity, it would have the option of accepting the second low bid. It wouldn't have to start over.
Is there a motion on this recommendation of Urban Environmental Director?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider recommendations of the GIS director regarding the purchase of mobile mapping software. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor Bragg, members of council. I would like for you to consider the recommendation to purchase some mobile mapping software, not only in the case of emergencies in the future, but in our use of data collection in the field. I think it would be very helpful to collect it, you know, it uses our BlackBerrys that we have existing now, and you can collect your data and photos in the field, and I'm trying to get it to work with FEMA and their recommendations so we can have a quicker turnaround on their requirements.
One of the things that Mayor and Council have challenged staff is to use technology to be more efficient. You're all well aware that we have a very robust GIS system, including mapping and data. What this does is now take the GIS data and puts it in our hands for our personnel out in the field. So for some items in delivering services to our residents, we'll be able to capture the data using the BlackBerry and upload it automatically to our GIS system, because our BlackBerry units have GPS locators. That will help us with addressing information. As you all well know, in the Good Friday tornado, staff worked very hard to collect the FEMA-required forms on damage assessment. In some cases, the house was not there. We couldn't get a house number on it. Using the BlackBerry in the field in the middle of the emergency, we can capture that information right there at the curbside and know what the address is just because it's GPS-located. So we see an application for us day-to-day. We also see some benefit should the city face another emergency where we could use this software. And at $10,000, we wanted to cost-share that with Murfreesboro Water and Sewer. There may still be a question that Murfreesboro Electric may be able to adapt and use this, so I did want to modify Mr. Lee's recommendation and say that we'd like to share it at a minimum between Murfreesboro City General and Water and Sewer on an equal basis. If Murfreesboro Electric can use it, Mr. Sacks indicated that he would be happy to share in the cost of it. So the cost to the City General Fund would be no more than $5,000 and maybe $3,333. Be happy to answer any questions, or Mr. Lee would?
Rob, does that cost-sharing go along with the annual maintenance fee that I see on here, so they'd be splitting that with us, too?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli.
Well, my other concern is, you know, working with the county, too, Rob, because, you know, we have this agreement where you all, MED serves some places, Middle Eastern, you know, we have some confusion, you know, about, we serve some things, Milton's Electric, and MED serves some things, so I would hope that you were talking to our folks, you know, and make sure that the county and the city both, you know, coordinate some similar systems, because it all affects all of us, you know, and so if you can do that with Mr. Allen or the EMT and us, you know, that'll work well.
Well, I'm also, I'm hoping to add the attributes of whose service area is in that attribute table, so when you go up to that person's home, you'll see it's served by MED, it's got water by CUD, it's got, you know, all the latest owner information, and so I'm hoping to have all that in there.
Because you know I go out Rucker Lane, and most of those folks are served by us, and some are folks served by MED, so it gets kind of confusing. So, you know, you really need to consider, you know, talking to all utilities, CUD, us, and MED, and make sure that we're all on the same page, so we don't have that confusion.
And that's where the GPS location ability of this is really powerful, because as you're going down Rucker Lane, the BlackBerry's going to know where you are. The database maintained properly is going to know who provides service, and so our employees in the field will have that information at their fingertips. They won't need to come back to the office or call out and have some confusion.
Because, Rob, we're going to go regardless, you know. If there's confusion, we're going to show up, you know. It doesn't matter, but make sure you work with the other utilities to make sure that, you know, that everybody's on the same page.
So have we had conversations with CUD? Are they aware of what we're considering, and do they have any interest in cost-sharing with us?
We haven't discussed the cost-sharing. However, this company, on their website, which is available to everyone, their demo is Consolidated Utility District. So what they're marketing is actually Murfreesboro examples.
Oh, okay.
So we know CUD is also using this software.
How many people initially do you think will be using this? Is there a limit on the software to how many people can use it?
Oh, no, not with this addition. It's unlimited applications and unlimited users, so we don't necessarily have to go run out and buy a whole bunch of BlackBerrys or laptops or anything. They can use that on their, it's just an application you download and a configuration file, and then you just go out and you just start popping and clicking.
So you use it on a laptop also?
Well, you could Bluetooth it from your BlackBerry to your laptop if the, you know, your communication goes down or something like that.
You just lost Councilman Young.
Councilman Young would like to meet with you later.
Mr. Lyons, you have a committee that you've put together through with city employees, I guess the technology. Is this a recommendation that came from those employees, or, I know you are meeting regularly?
They have been meeting regularly. Mr. Lee has been talking about this software program for some time, and I think in the wake of the tornado, realizing there may be a more efficient way to capture the data and actually have it, as they're collecting the data in the field, it would actually be being sent back here to City Hall, so we could be printing out those forms as we go. Having collected the forms by hand, they had to come back in and do...
Councilman Young would like to meet with you later.
Mr. Lyons, you have a committee that you've put together through with city employees, I guess the technology. Is this a recommendation that came from those employees, or, I know you are meeting regularly?
They have been meeting regularly. Mr. Lee has been talking about this software program for some time, and I think in the wake of the tornado, realizing there may be a more efficient way to capture the data and actually have it, as they're collecting the data in the field, it would actually be being sent back here to City Hall, so we could be printing out those forms as we go. Having collected the forms by hand, they had to come back in and do some data entry. So it took us a little while, so we think we can cut down some of the delay. I know they'll be supportive of this. There's, I think, at least two other pieces of emergency-related technology that they're recommending, which, one of which has got a very minimal cost. I expect to get their recommendation here very shortly.
All right. Any other questions regarding this recommendation, Mr. Lee, the GIS director? Please.
Has a motion been made?
I don't believe so.
Mr. Young, you're not, you're not?
No, I don't think Mr. Young's qualified to make that motion.
I'm gonna make it anyway. I move we approve this recommendation.
Second. Going out on a limb there, are you?
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll get it confused with my BlackBerry.
We've already authorized a tree service, so hopefully they won't cut that limb down.
Motion, second. Call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
This time we'll consider for adoption a resolution regarding hiring ICMA RC as providers of the city's new defined contribution pension program. Mr. Lyons?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I went back and looked at the file. We started on the process of moving toward a defined contribution plan three years ago next month. We've been at this for 35 months. There has been a tremendous amount of work done by Ms. Mahon, Ms. McGannon, and other city staff members in working with the city's pension committee to not only study initially 32 different plan designs, and then they, that, got that list shortened up to the defined contribution plan that was recommended to by the pension committee in October of 2008. Since that time, the pension committee has worked toward identifying a process and selection of a vendor who can provide excellent service to the city employees hired after this July 1st who would participate in the defined contribution plan. And that recommendation from the pension committee unanimously was the International City Management Association Retirement Corporation. That ICMA RC, as it's called, was founded in 1972. They're chartered only to work with local governments. They currently serve over 8,700 local governments in their pension program, and they cover over 900,000 participants. All they do is local government and employers, and so I think they understand our employees. We were very impressed with their service. They have independent, unaffiliated managers, so we know that the advice that they're going to be given to us is going to be independent. The fees that they proposed were the lowest of the firms that were interviewed. Their fees were transparent, and we know they will be very proactive and on-site in helping our employees make decisions affecting their retirement. ICMA RC also enjoys a retention rate on the communities that they serve that exceeds 99%. The reference checks on them were excellent. The pension committee has been very pleased with what we have seen from them. We are continuing to work in negotiations for adoption of that with ICMA RC, but felt it was appropriate to bring you a resolution asking for your concurrence in this selection. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Lyons?
Now, what, will, they will be a complete turnkey solution for the balance of what we need to make this transition?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
They are a one-stop, one-stop shop.
They're gonna work with our new employees.
Right. But they, I mean, they, they help us the rest of the way through the documenting process. They help us structure our portfolio provisions, and then they manage, according to our instructions, the funds going forward.
Yes. Well, the employees will actually get to select-
Right. I understand that, but-
The, the method in which they would like to have their money invested. One of the things that all the firms that we interviewed provided, and ICMA certainly did a good job with this as well, is having some target funds. So if an employee is not familiar with, with the stock market and mutual funds, they have the ability to say, "Please invest this in a manner that is consistent with the number of years I have till I retire." So if you're an employee in your twenties and you're gonna be, many years before you be facing retirement, the money will be invested a little bit more aggressively, and then I think it may even be on an every-month basis, that allocation starts to change to become a little bit more conservative. So those employees who are very close to retirement, that investment style is automatically more conservative to protect the assets. And so we know that'll actually be the default plan for employee who-
Will they, will they assist us in educating our new employees?
Absolutely. That was one of the things that was frankly, one of their strengths in the interview process, was that because the city's workforce is very diverse, we have employees with varying skills, and we know that they'll understand how to talk to police officers, firefighters, solid waste employees, attorneys, accountants, and the wide mix of employees that we have.
Okay. That's been one of the comments that has been made to me by city employees, was the education and not understanding what they were, what they would have to do if it were falling to them.
Sure. And that's, again, why we like them so much, was that they have, all they do is deal with local government employees.
Do they invest the money? Or will they find us funds that will invest the money?
I think they've got 29 different funds that are, that would be available to employees to, to select. So it is a wide variety of all sorts of investment vehicles.
But are they Vanguard, are they Fidelity? I mean, do they do exactly the same thing those providers would do? Or are these funds that they're recommending, do they belong to Vanguard, Fidelity, or somebody, Templeton, or somebody else?
It's both.
They have some of their own, as well as they have some outsider arrangements? Okay.
It was interesting, I was at the Tennessee Municipal League earlier this week, talked to city managers from several other communities. They are now looking at very large increases with their pension program. They were aware that Murfreesboro, three years ago, began going down this road. Each has asked for the city to send us, send them some information about what we've done, because they're seriously looking at moving toward a defined contribution plan. Frankly, I think Murfreesboro is three years ahead of other communities, and I think you're going to see a real trend in local government, looking at this as providing an excellent retirement vehicle for employees. Make no mistake about it, this can be a great plan for our employees. For the city, it certainly provides some stability for our future retirement cost planning. The consultant projected a $3 million cost savings in the first 10 years. So we think it's the best of both worlds. The city has some cost predictability and will accrue some savings. We also know that employees can do very well in this defined contribution plan, so we think it's the best of both worlds, and we will see a real trend. We know we've gotten the attention of other Tennessee communities who see this as a great opportunity for them as well.
Did you mention the names of nearby cities that used ICMA?
I believe Franklin and Brentwood both are two of the cities that are using ICMA RC.
I didn't hear. Where are they based at?
Washington, DC.
Any other questions regarding the adoption of this resolution?
Well, it can work well if employees really understand, you know, where you're going, what they, what they need to do at an early age. If they don't, it, Rob, it won't be a good thing.
And that's why we're hiring these folks, hopefully to help our employees.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Mayor, seeing no other questions, I move for approval.
Second. All right, you have a motion, and a second to adopt this resolution regarding hiring ICMA RC as providers of the city's new defined contribution pension program. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you.
This time we'll hear from the Parks and Recreation Director regarding a strategic planning project process.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. The Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Department is in the process of developing a five-year strategic plan. This plan is being formulated using several methods of information gathering. One is going to be a citywide survey. We've already conducted that citywide survey in our annual report, which I know I've furnished a copy to you. That information is in there on the, on the survey. We will be having public meetings. We'll be holding a focus group. That focus group, Mayor, will be at the same time that I think the other meeting that will be held on Manny Avenue. It will be in Patterson, March 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00. So I think Patterson is going to be busy that night. Plus, we will be getting input from our park staff, from our Parks and Recreation Commission, and of course, from city administration and from the council as well. We would welcome that input. This plan should give direction for us for the next five years. It should develop overall objectives. I did put on your, on your stand tonight, the goals and objectives for the Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Commission. You can see those, those are five goals, have been adopted and changed within the last year from the commission. But what this will do is, this will actually give a lot more direction in terms of where we need to go with our Parks and Recreation Department within the next five years. It will clearly define those objectives, and it will give us goals that should cover most of the areas that we will be looking at in Parks and Recreation. And let me just give you one example, if I could. One of the goals that the commission has, it deals with the physical, emotional, and social health of youth. And through this process, it may be that it is identified that we need more youth athletic fields. This plan would not define the number of fields that we would need, it would not define the locations. It would merely identify that need and that issue that we would need to address, and from staff's perspective, what we would do is get with administration, come up with a plan of action for addressing that specific need, bring that to the commission and to the council for consideration, so we can move forward on addressing those identified needs and issues that our citizens are telling us that what they would like to see in Parks and Recreation for the next five years. Like I was saying, we have five goals established. There are objectives under each one of those goals. We do want to make sure that we cover the public input very thoroughly, because we want to make sure that the public has input to this process, and this input, this process is driven by citizen input. So our next step in the process is holding a focus group, like I mentioned, March 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Patterson Community Center. I would invite that any city resident that would like to participate in that program, contact the mayor's office at 849-2629. Let me repeat that phone number, 849-2629, and submit their name to the mayor's office. Mayor, if we have a good outpouring of citizens that would like to participate in that focus group, and it looks like that we may need to schedule two or three, we will do that, because we think this is an important process, and we want to make sure that we get the public's input on this process. With that, I will answer any questions that you may have relative to the strategic planning process that we're going through.
All right. Any questions?
Just a comment. Now, Lenny, if, my only thing is, whomever serves needs to have a vested interest in Murfreesboro and Russell County. That's all I'm saying. You know, you know, you got Janelle Floyd, you got some other folks I could tell you, they need to have a vested interest in, in Russell County and Murfreesboro. That, that's, our folks, that's when, that's when you get the best results.
Yes.
They care about us, you know.
I agree with you. And generally speaking, most of the folks that serve on focus groups represent larger groups of individuals. They will come, will have a representative possibly from one of the leagues. We'd love to have representatives from the church, representatives from other groups, civic groups, those kind of things. But we have gone through a staff planning retreat, and we have looked at and examined the goals that we have and the objectives. I can tell you that there was a lot of discussion at staff level, and, and we're ready to present some of that as well when we meet with our focus groups. And the focus groups create a real dynamic. The way that, that process works is, we challenge them to look at the existing goals, to look at the objectives. We ask them to list needs and issues that they may have, and then through the process, we try to reach consensus, so that they identify which one they feel is really number one, which one's number two, which one needs to be done in the short term, which one needs to be done in the long term. So it's a pretty thorough process that we go through in trying to decipher what the public is trying to tell us in terms of those needs and issues.
So someone interested in softball, soccer, tennis, baseball, the pavilions, Old Fork Park-
River Trail-
Oakland Wilderness Center-
Resource Management-
Barfield-
Outdoor Recreation-
St. Clair Senior uses our rec, don't they use-
Seniors.
Seniors use our recreation program managers?
Yes, sir.
So if you were somebody that used Patterson, or Sportscom, or Segal's Soccer, or Neighborhood Park, all of, somebody that's got an interest there?
Even if it's just somebody that likes to go read in the park and may come in and say, "I'd rather have quieter areas in the, in the park areas," we would welcome that input.
All right. So any persons who were interested, please participate with us on March 16th, Tuesday night, 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Patterson Community Center.
Yes, and please, Mr. Mayor, if I may, call your office, 849-2629. Give that name to the office staff there, and I'll get that, and I'll make sure they're a part of the process.
And Lenny knows, all of us up here, I think, you know, all of us up here, you know, we're very strong on neighborhood associations, you know. I can't really push how prudent it is for neighborhoods to, to, to get together and be strong within their neighborhoods. It helps the crime, it helps us, it helps, it helps the whole community. So, and then the Parks and Recreation Department does a wonderful job trying to promote neighborhoods, and Lenny do a great job.
Thanks, sir.
And, Mr. Goodwin-
Yes.
-I'm fortunate to coach Optimus League Baseball this year. We had our first practice, our coaches clinic on, on Thursday, or Saturday, last Saturday, and noticed that out at Sportscom, that we had a lot of heavy equipment that was working out at the Sportscom.
We, we, Mr. McFarland, we have a lot of activity going on there in the process of renovating the outdoor pool into a water park, and they are on schedule, happy to report. And they, we've had some snow days, we've had some rain days, we've had some really cold days, and each time, they have been there working, and we're very pleased with the progress at this point.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Goodwin, and we hope we have a good participation in this strategic planning process.
One other question.
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin, Mayor, if I might?
Sure.
While you're with us, I haven't heard anything lately about your staff. Are you up to a full complement in the leadership of your department?
No, sir. We are working on that. Mr. Lyons and I have discussed it, and we're in the process of, of trying to get back up to full staff. And I just submitted my budget to Ms. Wright, and it reflects my sentiments about that and what my desires are.
You'll be all right.
We'll be good. We'll be good. We're doing really well, and let me take this opportunity just to thank the council and the mayor for all your support. I can tell you, Murfreesboro is one of the best places in the world to live, has one of the best Parks and Recreation Departments, not because I'm the director, it's because
You have before you a revised list of the statements to be considered for payment. Are there any questions as to the bills to be paid? If not, is there a motion that we pay the bills?
Some moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
I recommend to you tonight, for the Public Building Authority of the City of Murfreesboro, these appointments, and this is a change of the expiration date for Mr. Ted LaRoche and Mr. Wayne Belt, due to the way they were originally set to have a term, their expiration date is wrong, and it needs to be added one year to their six-year term, and that would be through January the 1st of 2014. And then, I'd like to reappoint for six-year terms, Mr. Ronnie Grimes and Ms. Candy Joyce. And the expiration on that would be January 1st of 2016. And I would like to appoint to fill Ms. Ellen Wilson's unexpired term, Mr. Warren Jackson. I make that recommendation to you.
Move accept the recommendation, the mayor.
Second. All right. You have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
All right. At this time, we'll consider any other business from the staff or the city council to come before the council. Mr. Huddleston.
Mayor Bragg, members of the council, good evening. Bring a matter for you tonight on granting of TDOT controlled access in city right-of-way for the Fortress Boulevard Manson Pike realignment, and this addresses the realigned Fortress Boulevard right-of-way. We placed on your desk a cover letter from the City Engineer and Assistant City Attorney, and behind that, also an exhibit. The exhibit probably be useful as we discuss this matter before we do not. And as you're aware, earlier this year, we issued a contract, a notice, and awarded the contract and issued the notice to proceed on this project, and we're currently, staff's currently finalizing the details of the paperwork, authorizations, and approval that are necessary through TDOT. A little background, Manson Pike, as it currently intersects with I-24, at the interchange is a controlled access roadway. A controlled access roadway is a roadway that has certain limitations to its access rights. Those are clearly defined and legally established restrictions. All of our interstate interchanges have access control for the first several hundred feet, and certain highways here in our jurisdiction have that as well, John Bragg Highway being one of those, Mayor. And because of that, in our realigning Fortress Boulevard, we need to establish an equivalent controlled access portion of the new roadway. And the majority of that controlled access realignment will be within TDOT's existing right-of-way. A small portion, however, falls within right-of-way that the city acquired for this project. If you'd refer to the exhibit, we have a triangle, triangular area in red, and that's a city-acquired right-of-way. We anticipate the need to transfer jurisdictional control of that right-of-way to TDOT, and then establishing a controlled access on those, on that particular adjoining property. We've scheduled this on the Planning Commission's agenda as a mandatory referral, and be on the agenda of the March 17th meeting. And tonight, we recommend that you authorize the mayor to execute the right-of-way documents to be prepared by our legal department, following a positive recommendation and approval by the Planning Commission. I'd be glad answering questions. Mr. Oz and Mr. Griffith are also here to share any information that we may need to with you here tonight.
It's only the triangle in red.
That's what we're asking. Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Huddleston on this recommendation?
Now, in our conversations with TDOT, is this their expectation that we'll turn this over to them?
Not only their expectation, but it's their requirement that-
That's even clearer.
Yes. And this is, this is typical at any interstate interchange. We do want to control the access to avoid the volume and speed of the traffic, to avoid conflicts with unwarranted unauthorized accesses. And basically, we're talking about curb cuts, driveways, ramps, entrances, those sorts of things, conflicting with the movements onto and off of the interstate.
Other questions or comments?
And as you'll recall, for this project, the property owners involved here have donated that right-of-way to the City of Murfreesboro.
Questions?
This is under, this project has started. When is the completion date on this old road project?
Let me defer to Mr. Griffith on that one.
Please, Don, if he comes up, go talk about a change order.
I appreciate you getting that one last shot in here at the end. Project is well underway, and we're happy to report that it's actually a little ahead of schedule. With that being said, it's scheduled to be completed. This project, along with another project that's set to begin shortly, which will complete this all the way to Blaze Drive. So, we'll have a five-lane section, or a newly constructed five-lane section, all the way from the interchange to Blaze Drive. All that's scheduled to be completed by fall of 2011. You've heard this recommendation, Mr. Huddleston. Are you ready for a motion?
Mayor, I would move for approval. Second.
All right. You have a motion and second. Any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
I'm going to vote for this, but I tell you what, Chris, you know, I got some reservations. But we'll go on.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Huddleston. Other business from staff or city council to come before the council?
Mayor Bragg, I've got two change orders. The first is over at the Fire Administration and Water and Sewer Engineering Building. As you've seen, that building is getting re-roofed. We did discover the need for some additional downspout piping and grading. The amount of the change order is $921. The second change order involves a roofing project at station number, fire station number three. There was a amount of plywood that needed to be replaced, and the total amount of that change order is $216. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions on these two change orders?
Mr. Griffith, have anything to do with that?
No, sir.
All right. You have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
Other business? Mr. Calo?
Mayor, I thought I was just going to have one item under other business, but I apparently have two. Would you like me to cover the home grant first?
Yes.
Let me give you a little background. Home is a federal program-
Just a minute. This was the consent agenda item that's been moved.
Right. This is the consent agenda item that was moved. And the recommendation, we're, I'm asking for permission to submit an application for home funding. And home is a, it's often considered a companion piece to the community development block grants. Murfreesboro is a formula entitlement city for a community development block grant. We are not an entitlement for home. Home is a program that, it's actually the Home Investment Partnerships Program. HUD allocates funds by formula among eligible state and local governments to expand the supply of decent, safe, sanitary, and affordable housing. It's, because we are not an entitlement, we are, we're forced to go to the state. The Tennessee Housing Development Agency handles the state allocation for home funds. They're estimating this year that they will have someplace between $15 and $17 million. They don't know yet, because the formula grants totals have not been released yet, nor have they been released for CDBG. We're expecting that next week. But we were also told in January that it would be the first week of February, so we'll get those numbers. Home grants from THDA are very, very, very competitive. We are, there's a matrix. Over the last 20 years, we have, when they do fund a project, it's for a three-year term. Over the last 20 years, we have successfully administered six home grants through the Community Development Department. The last one, we finished in 2007. We applied for home funds in 2008. We were unsuccessful. We actually, on the matrix, we tied with another community, and because they didn't have enough money to fund either one of us, or both of us, they didn't fund either one of us and put it into another pot. And last year, we submitted virtually the same application. We missed by one point to a community that had disaster points. They had had a tornado. And unfortunately, the tornado points were awarded before we had our tornado. So, this year, we have tornado points, and because of that, we're hoping we're, our application, if you allow us to submit it, has a better chance of being successful. We're asking THDA to give us a grant of $500,000, which is the maximum grant allowable. I also know that Rutherford County has submitted a grant application for $500,000. What we're asking for, we want to use our money, and this is straight out of the application. Murfreesboro's Community Development Department proposes to use the home grant funds to supplement CDBG funding allocated for housing rehabilitation. It is the city's intention to use the home money exclusively for reconstruction projects, projects that would replace the city's most dilapidated substandard homes. We would supplement home funds and continue to pay for rehab projects not involving reconstruction with CDBG dollars. The homes that we're talking about are owner-occupied residences. In the last three years, we've done six of these projects. The homeowner comes to us, asking for help with rehabilitation, we inspect the home. If it's not feasible to do a rehabilitation project, and we remember, we've got the $25,000 cap on our investment in a rehab project, then we consider reconstruction. But it is owner-occupied housing for low-income residents of Murfreesboro. And if you have any questions, I'd love to tell you more about the program. We will know in May whether or not we get funding, and if we don't get it this year, we'll reply next year if you so choose for us to do so.
Mr. Calo, as you said, this money, if we got this grant, this is for rehabbing current owner-occupied housing for folks who can't afford to make-
That is correct.
-do that themselves. This is different than what some of the issues that you've been addressing this week, as far as money that allows-
Totally different.
This cannot be used to buy foreclosed homes and anything like that.
No, sir. No, sir. This is to help low-income residents of the City of Murfreesboro. In this case, we would choose to use this money for reconstructions rather than rehabs. We'll use our regular CDBG money for rehabs, and just do reconstruction projects with this, because they're more expensive. And I think about some of the projects that we've done. Over the last three years, we've replaced, I remember the first one we did after I came, and we had home money in that project. It was a house that had been built in 1905. The house was substandard, probably, the day it was built. Why it had not burned down 20 years ago, I don't know. But what we have is a new house. If that house had been part of the housing stock for Murfreesboro for 100 years, think about what our new house is going to be. It's going to be part of the housing stock of Murfreesboro for a long, long time. All of our projects are like this. We had another project, the one that we finished up our last home grant with. This was a home, we couldn't figure out quite why the kitchen floor was, was falling in, until we got the house torn down and found out that the foundation of the house was railroad ties. They'd started rotting. Now, that house is now on a concrete footer, and it, the house earned an Energy Star certificate, so our homeowner is saving money on a daily basis on energy costs. That house is going to be a valuable contribution, not just to her and her family, but for the City of Murfreesboro for many, many years. So, that's what the home program is about. That's why it's, we feel like it's important to apply for this grant. And I would recommend that we do so. And I have the grant in my hand, and as soon as the mayor signs it, I will, if you choose to let me submit it, I will carry it to THDA in Nashville tomorrow and personally submit it.
All right. You've heard this recommendation to submit an application to THDA for this funding of the 2010 home grant cycle. Is there a motion?
Some moved. Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilly.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye.
And Mr. Calo, I believe you have another.
I do have another item on other business. I believe it was last month, I came to you with a recommendation that we transfer $50,000 from our housing rehab line to down payment assistance. You approved several of those tonight. We're out of money. Every bit of that $50,000 has been committed, and we still have a pinup demand. We have at least one more, that if you accept my recommendation tonight, we will be funding, which will give us two more. Our current budget sets aside $60,000 for our agreement with Middle Tennessee State University and the Small Business Development Center for Micro Enterprise Technical Assistance. I've talked with Patrick Gujo, the center director. He tells me that they will not be needing the entire $60,000 this fiscal year. In fact, he tells me that they may not need even half of that. And in fact, he and I have already discussed the budget for next year. They're going to be requesting $30,000 instead of $60,000 for that technical assistance. So, what I'm suggesting is that we transfer $30,000 from the line item for micro enterprise to down payment assistance, so that we can continue helping more first-time home buyers buy houses in Murfreesboro.
Mr. Calo, has there not been a lot of requests for the micro enterprise funds?
Well, at this point, we had our, they conducted their first meeting about two weeks ago. So, it's taken, there's been about a six-month ramp-up period on the project, so that is why there's not been that demand. Plus, when we were setting the budget a year ago, there was a lot of guesswork involved. And now that we've had a chance to, at the point we were making a budget, we didn't even have the policies and procedures for the program. So, we knew that we wanted to do it, we needed, and so we just had to pick a number. And it turns out, the number was high, which, if you choose to let me make this transfer, means that we have that money that we can use immediately for down payment assistance.
Now, step us through, who would be eligible for this?
For the down payment assistance, you must be a low or moderate income resident who is a first-time home buyer, who wishes to buy a house inside the city limits of Murfreesboro.
Okay.
And for HUD's purposes, low mod means 80% of median income. So, that would be a resident, if you were a single person in a household, I think that's 36.5 right now, and it adjusts for the size of the household.
And could an investor use this?
Absolutely not. No.
I didn't get on my question yet.
I knew exactly, because we've heard that question before. You must, the terms of, and let me explain to you, this is, the way that we structure this, this is a deferred loan. And so we have a second mortgage on the house that stays with the house. The loan is payable on the sale of the house. So we will recover our $10,000 at some point down the line. We would hope not soon on these, we hope that they're planning on living in their homes for a long time. But at the point they decide to sell, at the point at which they say, you know, it's time for me to get a better house, then we will recover our $10,000.
So this is not a gift?
This is not a gift, no, sir.
Okay.
This is federal pass-through money?
This is federal, this is Community Development Block Grant money, yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Callow?
Mr. Callow, if you aren't making this, if we don't make this transfer and the micro enterprise center ends up not needing the money, what would become of it?
We would, it would pass forward to next year.
Okay.
And we would just, we would reallocate it next year.
If they don't need it, you have another need within your budget that's going to help some families?
That's correct.
I certainly appreciate Mr. Gihoe making us aware of that and you working closely with them. Certainly, we don't want to do anything to hinder any of our business development, small business or whatever.
We're really, really excited about that project. And like I said, he's already, they've already had their first meeting, and they've got another one scheduled. He assures me that they are amply financed for this year. And we've got money in the micro enterprise loan fund, and my budget request for next year will be to supplement that so that we'll have a larger pool.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, you have this request to transfer. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Mr. Callow, while you're here, would you
Yes, sir.
We've had several questions this week, and I know that we approved some funding from, I guess, CDBG for neighborhood stabilization, although I think it came through THDA.
Well, it's, it is not CDBG money. It is specifically Neighborhood Stabilization Program money. I'd love to talk with you about it.
From Tennessee Housing Development?
Yes, sir. The Neighborhood Stabilization Program is another federal program. It was, came from the HARA, as opposed to ERA. HARA was, I believe it's Housing Emergency Relief Act of 2008. It was a piece of legislation that was passed during the Bush administration. And the purpose of the NSP, which is just a small part of HARA, is to address the problem of foreclosures in the United States. And there were certain cities that got direct entitlements, we did not. It's kind of like home. And so any money that you get for NSP, if you're not in entitlement, comes through the state. And in this case, Tennessee Housing Development Agency is the agency that makes those grants. We actually got, the city of Murfreesboro has two NSP contracts. The city received two grants. One was made directly to the city. And with that grant, we have purchased two vacant foreclosed houses, which will be resold on the open market. We are also assisting income-eligible home buyers who wish to buy vacant foreclosed houses with down payment assistance. You approved one of those tonight on the consent agenda. The terms of the grant require the purchaser to occupy the home for a minimum of five years. And with that agreement that you approved tonight, we have provided this assistance to seven home buyers to date. We also have another one that we're expecting to close within the next 10 days. The second grant was awarded to the Murfreesboro-Rutherford County Continuum of Care. The continuum of care is basically the same agencies which are members of the mayor's homeless task force. The grant was made, was awarded to the continuum, but is being administered by the city. The terms of the grant call for the administrator to purchase vacant foreclosed, single-family residences in specified census tracts, contract for any rehabilitation work needed, then transfer the property to one of five nonprofit agencies named in the application. Those organizations are Greenhouse Ministries, The Journey Home, Second Chance Ministries, Elijah House Ministries, and Domestic Violence Program Incorporated. And to date, the city has purchased seven homes. What you've been hearing about is a result of a flyer that was circulated last weekend in several of the city's neighborhoods. I haven't seen the flyer, but I've been told by a number of residents, they don't mind, I think you've all heard about it as well. This flyer asserts that the city has purchased property in these neighborhoods which will be used as homeless shelters. Many of you have heard from residents who received this flyer or know someone who has. You've referred many of those calls and emails to me. I received a number of those phone calls myself. And the first thing that I tell all of them is that assertion is not true. My understanding is the flyer also identifies several addresses that are to become homeless shelters. The properties that the flyer alludes to are properties that the city purchased with Neighborhood Stabilization Program funds. I want to share this from the THDA NSP program manual with you. Considerations for Continuum of Care grantees, and that's what we are. Non-permanent housing, such as homeless shelters, nursing homes, et cetera, is not eligible under the set aside, which is what this is. So by definition, it's, we cannot use any of the properties that we purchase as a homeless shelter. Notwithstanding the fact that the zoning ordinance of the city of Murfreesboro says that a homeless shelter has to be in an industrial zone. We're not, I don't think, going to be going and spot zoning individual lots in residential neighborhoods as industrial. It's, the assertion that these are homeless, potentially homeless shelters, won't work.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Callow? Because I know a number of us have gotten emails and have had conversations with interested neighbors.
Mr. Callow, when you have spoken with these concerned citizens?
Yes, sir.
At the end of those conversations, where does their understanding seem to lie?
I want to share with you an email that Mr. Gilli and I got this morning, or Mr. Gilli got it, he shared it with me. The resident told us that she had, was aware of this flyer, and she says, "I'm not a reactionary, but this flyer makes one a little uncomfortable." I responded to her with a letter, I've sent more than 100 letters to residents in these two neighborhoods. I don't know whether I got everybody, I'm sure I didn't. But we sent her a copy of this letter. And we also sent, I also sent to her a copy of an email that Ms. Deborah Johnson, who is the, she's the executive director of the Domestic Violence Program. And before I bring this up, I had already talked with her. She's given permission for me to share this with you. And she also had a letter which says, defines what they intend to do with the house, that they, the two houses, actually, that are going to come to them through the program. And the email that Mr. Gilli and I got back this afternoon from this person says, "Thank you all so much for your prompt response. Wholeheartedly support the mission of this endeavor. I applaud each of you and your work toward providing help for victims of abuse as well as stabilization of our neighborhoods. I worked as a volunteer for a domestic abuse shelter all four years of college. I know the whole routine. I am pleased that a deserving mother and her precious children will have the opportunity to start all over again right in our neighborhood." Now, is that going to be the response for all the neighbors? Unfortunately, I don't think it's going to be. But when we talk to folks, they at least say, "Okay, I'm relieved, it's not going to be a homeless shelter." Then you get into, you know, whether or not this is a good use of the federal money. That's not what this is about. But I think that most folks, after we talk to them, after we explain, have a response that's very similar to this.
Mr. Gilli?
Mr. Callow, including in not being able to be used as homeless shelters, that would also include halfway houses?
That is correct.
Transitional housing?
That is correct.
The families that would be living in these houses will be signing leases?
By definition, again, it has to be, it has to be permanent housing, which means that you have to have a lease, that you have to agree to follow the NSP rules about who you can rent to. You have to sign, when we, there are transfer documents that were supplied to us by THDA that are quite explicit that this is rental property to be used only as rental property. There are also clauses in both the restrictive covenants that are registered as part of this and also in the deed of trust. And the city will hold a note and a deed of trust equal to the amount of money we've got into the project that we will be following for 10 years for compliance. And it is, it's quite explicit that every organization, and they've known this from the first day of this project, you will follow all state, local, federal laws, ordinances. And if we find that you're not in compliance, then you are in default, and we can call the loan.
Mr. Callow, the two example properties that we've got the majority of the emails and the calls about this week, if I understand correctly, those residences are about to be inhabited on a permanent, long-term lease basis by women who had the courage to stand up and get their children out of an abusive situation?
That's correct.
Take the courage to do that, seek help, and are now looking for an opportunity to take care of their children and live as a family, safe and secure, just like every one of us sitting here.
You're absolutely correct, Mr. Gilli. And let me share with you this part of the email that Ms. Johnson has been sending out. She says, "I can assure you, we will be an asset to the neighborhood and will not be renting to any family that will pose any danger to your family." She was sending this to a resident of one of the streets that the flyer was discussing. She says, it goes on to say, "The houses presented to us by the city will be single-family, permanent rental homes. They may in fact be rented by a former client of our agency or a former victim of family violence, but I stress the word 'former.' These families will have completed any need for safe shelter and will now be independent households like any other rental tenant. The house may also be rented through normal rental channels with tenants who have, having had no previous agency affiliation or any violence in their homes." To kind of, and she's absolutely correct about that. The only requirement is that they meet the income specifications of the NSP program. Now, to give you an idea, you asked me how some of the other residents, we mailed a letter Monday to the residents of another street that was named in the flyer. I've had one response since, and the mail, it was in their mailbox on Tuesday, had one response on Wednesday. Lady called me up and she says, "I want to talk about this house because it's right across the street from me." And I said, "Okay, and I'm ready to," she said, "No, no, I understand your letter. I have no problem. Who do I need to talk to about the possibility of my daughter and her family renting that house?" And so I referred her, and they have had that conversation. We'll see what happens.
Mr. Edwards?
First of all, I'd like to make a comment. As I listen to this part of this, knowing what I know about domestic violence and these such things, I would think that it would, that confidentiality would be a big part of these equations.
And the only reason I'm willing to talk about it is because Mrs. Johnson has assured me that these are former clients and certainly, we were not, you try, we wanted to be sensitive to the potential future residents. That the flyer has kind of thrown a fly in that ointment, so she agreed with me that we needed to be upfront, and this is what's happened.
Okay. That brings me to my, what I hope is my last question, Mayor. Do you have any insight into the motivations of the creator of the flyer?
Mr. Edwards, that would be pure speculation on my part, and I don't, I don't choose to get into that one.
Mr. Washington?
John, are these homes under the federal mandates, like, you know, Section 8, like, you know?
You know, theoretically, there's no reason why they couldn't take a Section 8 voucher.
They ought to be.
Yeah. And if the agency didn't have a client, then I, we haven't really talked about that with them, but yeah, it would be eligible for a Section 8 voucher, and they would fit the income profile, for sure.
Now, you're making faces, McGannell, what's on your mind? Okay.
Mr. McFarland?
She's trying to stay awake.
My question was that, you know, we've received with the emails and phone calls regarding the program, first, my question is, was there a name on the flyer that was sent out?
No, sir. There was no name on the flyer.
Okay.
And there was no contact number on the flyer. The residents who received the flyer were invited to attend a meeting.
Okay. The second question, one of the concerns has been, not necessarily with the domestic violence shelter, but, you know, an email that I got that I forwarded about the tenant mix that was going to go into this, some of these homes. And, you know, pointing us to a certain state website that gave us the missions of some of these organizations. How is that monitored?
Compliance, the city will be monitoring the compliance, as I said, for 10 years. And because the contract with, from THDA is being administered by my office, I guess I'm the one that's going to be monitoring compliance for next 10 years. So I hope that means I've got a job.
One of our first, one of our questions when this came up was, what is this going to do with the integrity of the neighborhood that's already in place?
Mr. McFarland, we have already transferred ownership of two of these houses. One of the houses went to The Journey Home. We transferred ownership on a Friday, was it a Friday, Mr. Ives? We transferred it on a Friday. They moved a family in on Saturday. And until this flyer hit, nobody in the neighborhood knew that they were any different from any other neighbor in the neighborhood. It's, without getting too explicit about who they are, it's a, it's a single father with three kids. He's been having some difficulties. He was laid off. The Journey Home has helped him find a job. He has a long-term lease for a year, which will help his family get stable. And they're going to be productive members of our, they already are productive members of our community, and they will continue to be so.
And most of these homes that we, you know, have talked about were homes that have been foreclosed and were
All of them have been foreclosed and vacant.
In some state of disrepair in the neighborhoods.
Absolutely.
Nobody to look after.
Well, it, so just, and I don't want to belabor the point, but when HUD was setting up this program, they developed a data set. They looked at every, the way they chose to look at it was by census tract. They looked at every census tract, every block group in the entire country. In Tennessee, they looked at rates, they looked at numbers. The census tracts with the worst rates are in Shelby County, they're in Memphis. The two census tract with the highest number of foreclosures in the entire state of Tennessee are in Rutherford County. And the second one is in Murfreesboro. And that's Census Tract 409. And most of the, we can only do these NSP deals in, I think we've got four census tracts that are eligible in Murfreesboro. And all but two, I believe, of our deals have been in Census Tract 409. So we have, with the seven that we've helped with down payment assistance, with the two that we have purchased for ourselves that we have purchased for ourselves, and with the seven that we've bought on behalf of the Continuum of Care, there are now 16 houses in Murfreesboro that have owners that are living in those homes, or will be living in those homes, or will have a tenant living in those homes, that are no longer vacant, and more important, they're not on the market, competing with everybody else that's trying to sell a house.
And that's a genuine concern. Mr. Gilli?
Just two more comments I want to make. First, Mr. Calo, one of the first individuals who contacted me when they got that flyer, the kind, this tells what you're saying about the, taking the foreclosed home that may be in some state of disrepair. Her first comment to me was, after I explained to her what it was going to be used for, she talked about how she had seen the work going on at this particular residence, and how much she appreciated the improved way the house looked, and what an increased value it had made to the property itself. The second thing I want to hit on is, in today's news journal, on the online version of it, there was apparently a women's luncheon today in the NBC Suites?
Right.
That the topic was domestic violence, and talking about the fact that approximately one in four women are victims of domestic violence, talking about the hurdles that it takes to overcome and starting a new life.
Absolutely.
And this is exactly what this is designed to help in those two home situations.
Absolutely. And those two, it's helping families that have been part of that. In other cases, it's going to be like the situation with The Journey Home. It's a family which was on, which could have become homeless had they not had this opportunity. And that's what the whole program's about. The mayor, just to follow up on that point you're making, the mayor and I shared, in fact, I think, Mr. Gilli, you might have been on this one, we had a comment yesterday from a gentleman that lives on this street. And at your, both of you forwarded that to me, I sent him the package, he got the letter, and he emailed us back today. He said, "I just wanted to drop you an email, and thank you all for your quick response. I kind of figured it was something like this, and the flyer attached to my door was blown out of proportion. It actually sounds like a good idea, and now the property will be taken care of, instead of laying dormant because of the foreclosure status. Thank you again in your response."
Mr. McFarland?
I was just going to ask that, you know, my number-one concern is making sure that we're not doing any damage to the existing neighbors. You know, if I had a family?
Absolutely. And that's our greatest concern as well.
But I would like to ask, and Mr. Lyons, I guess this is a question for you, but I would like to, as a council member, at the minimum, have a quarterly report showing us where we are on these homes, the current status, and maybe some inspection reports that show us that we're monitoring that situation.
Absolutely. We'll be happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Calo. Any other questions or comments? We appreciate your explanation, and certainly the problems with which you're addressing it. And I'm certain that all of us have preconceived notions from time to time, but many of us have been aware that, other than, I think, Journey Home is a relatively new organization, the others have been really very straightforward with their ability to, and disciplined in dealing with these problems and in the neighborhoods. And we just don't have problems from those particular providers.
One of the, one of the homeowners in, across the street, in talking with him, after I explained, he says, "Well, you know, actually, this will be the second rental house on our street, in this little cul-de-sac of eight." And he says, "We are fortunate that the owner, that the people who live in this other rental house take good care of the property, because the owner lives in Arizona." Well, the owners of these houses live in Murfreesboro. They are committed to our neighborhoods, just like we are.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Calo. Is there any other business from the staff or council to come before the council at this time? Seeing none, you're adjourned. Thank you.